Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Boardwork Session for Wednesday, December 4th, 2024. It's 10:01 a.m. The earlier part of our work session for new employer orientation is not live streaming, but we are live streaming the rest of the session, which relates to primarily 2024-2025 midterm budget deliberations. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair of Commissioners Wayne Fornier on Zoom, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Gary Edwards, and Emily Claus to my left, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Rob Gelder and Josh Cummings, and Robin Campbell, and the budget team here to go through this topic. We have public availability on the Thurston County YouTube channel, and we're here until 12 if needed, and I'm going to turn this to County Manager.
Thank you so much. I want to start with thanking the budget team for their work to get to this point. And I will say that, just as an overview, we saw this with the agenda yesterday and all of the voucher lists. The team is still working through the dynamics of the system migration. That's normal, and I think we're making progress as a team. But just for their sake and for Summer's sake, it does make their normal tasks more difficult because they're having to double, triple-check information. The pathway to get that information is being established, just like you would when you do transfer over to a new computer system. And it's not just them. It's not the five of them represented here with Summer and Robin, Jennifer, Dolly, and Tiffany, or Tiff, excuse me. But it's also all of our department staff working. It's the auditor staff as well. And so just a huge appreciation. Doing a system migration is a bit like jumping into a cold swimming pool. It's really, really cold at first, but you got to make the plunge. You acclimate over time, and then you start having fun. And we're still in the point of acclimating, I think, right now. But we will have fun and start swimming and doing laps and jumping on the pool, squeegees and all that kind of stuff. That's in the future. But with that, you know, it's also an opportunity for us to look at our next year calendar, which we talked about the planning session yesterday, because our desire is, as a county manager's team and the budget team, really getting this information to you as soon as we can. We understand right now we're not able to do that with as much time, and so we are very open to questions. I think also what we're preparing for is landing the 25 budget, but remembering that in January, February, March, this team's going to come back to you with the realities of the '26-'27, and how do we balance what is a significant shortfall? I think that it's on our minds to finish this and then go forward. The other item that is, I think, really important to mention is there's a changing of the guard taking place. And we have Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, who's been with the organization. Is it 15 years?
Almost 15.
Almost 15 years. And as I understand, and not just from her, but from others who were member of the county at that time, had came in and really built a lot of infrastructure to a budget process that didn't have one. And what we see is a strong-established process that the county commissioners established their budget office and worked with an assigned staff to carry out those duties and really created a lot of understanding and process where there wasn't any. And so I really appreciate that and appreciate the time it's taking to bring Summer up to speed. And, you know, Summer was very successful in CPED and working it through. And I remember when her name was mentioned, just as interim, Robin was like, "If anyone can do it, I think Summer can." Yes, that good selection. And so that connection and bond, while I'm sure it has its ups and downs, and as they say, you had to crack a few eggs to make an omelet, they're cooking the proverbial budget to bring it forward. It's a process. And then what I'm learning in this county is that the RCWs kind of call out certain things for the auditor to do and things that the county commissioner's office does. And we're working on what that looks like and how we formalize that. And that's a process in itself. But I really do appreciate the partnership that we have, and we'll continue that level of partnership. The timing of budget, where I came from, we were on a fiscal year that started July to June. So we were crunching during the summer. So it's different for me to be crunching during the holidays. And I just want to highlight that while other folks are taking time off and other things, our budget staff here in the room and across the county probably have a drumstick in one hand and their laptop in the other. Because there is a lot of work taking place in the time where a lot of folks are able to disconnect and be with family. And it's something that we are probably going to have to look at so that we can just make sure that we have time and place for everything. Because we're also closing out the year. We're looking at bringing on new commissioners. There's a lot of moving parts, and I say that because it's a team effort, as we talked about in new employee orientation. So I appreciate our department heads, our clerk who's been working high level, bringing everything together, the transition of information melding, your staff being patient with us, because I know that sometimes things are coming in less time than desirable. And while that's not our goal, we're going to work through a different process. Then we're also having big conversations, like the Public Safety Sales Tax. We made progress there. And so I want to make sure we're highlighting the successes as we look at a battle-weary team, you know, with the light of their laptops on their faces. I appreciate your sacrifice and hard work. I appreciate you sticking with the vision and the direction that we have. You're making significant contributions to the county. And I know that you're in meetings sometimes where things are said, and other folks may have perspectives about what should be done and shouldn't be done. But I want you to know that from the county manager, and I do believe that the commissioners would echo it, your hard work is appreciated. And I love when I say good morning to you, you're like, "Is it a good morning?" No, she's in the game. Because if you were too happy, I would think something's wrong with you. You're checking out.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Leonard. I appreciate you saying that about the good morning. The other stuff is fine, too, but...
And then, Tiff, we are glad to have you join the team. I've already seen you add contributions. And then, Dolly, you are providing a lot of great, steady perspective. And I see your eyes flicker sometimes, and it's like, "I'm not sure we should do that." And giving your voice in meetings is really important. So just taking the time to set the table, that this organization has experienced a lot of transition. It's hard to articulate that to the public who's watching everything that's going on. We've decided to remodel our house during the holidays. And I cannot stress enough that while there are bumps and turbulence here and there, but, Robin, your contribution to this county and this kind of being your last budget rodeo, I appreciate your commitment to helping us. I know that sometimes we may have perspectives that you don't, won't always agree with, but you've been very gracious to say, "Well, got to make sure we don't fall outside the parameters of the law, but, County Manager, I haven't seen it done that way, so let's think about that." And I appreciate that support. And, Summer, I appreciate your leadership, you taking over in the time that you have. We, is a recipe for breaking people. But your inner spirit, your joy, your enthusiasm, I believe, is what's been a shining star in this environment, not only for your team, but for the other folks out there. And I know that there is in this role, as Robin is passing on the armor, there is a guardianship that you take for the general fund and preserving the commissioners' right for their discretion that cannot be taken by another elected official, because that's their role, as those that control the purse strings, which we are committed to preserving while working out a collaborative partnership. So if this was easy, anybody could do it, but it's not. And, Robin, we appreciate your longevity and your continuity and the deposits you've made. And I believe that deserves a round of applause. So with that, thank you for allowing me that. Not that I asked for permission to do that, but thank you nonetheless. With that, I'd be happy to turn over to the presentation and to Summer and the budget team to walk us through. And as always, Commissioners, please just stop us if you have any questions.
Okay, good morning. Thank you. This is the 2024-2025 midterm budget final deliberations. We've put together a few slides for your consideration. Thank you. The first slide shows the general fund approved during the preliminary budget deliberation process. It shows you the '24-'25 revenues and expenses, as well as the funds that comes from and the departments. Can you go to the next one?
Can I ask something?
Yes, sir. Back, please.
I guess I have two questions. First question is, I have two charts that kind of have different fonts and similar titles. Are they different?
So, yes, if one...
Does one supersede the other, or do I need them both?
October 14th.
They're both dated December 4th.
Oh.
Yeah, so we got...
I got two of them, too, so I'm trying to...
And they're, listen, this.
It looks similar, but not identical.
I have the one attached. I have one that was attached to the packet as well.
So I'm going to just, I'm going to stick with the one that you're showing.
It looks like, Commissioners, we can, the one with the big logo...
Yeah. Good shape, okay. And then, no problem. And then, just a second question is, so as to this one you're showing us, can you just kind of, at a high level, like, what is it that this, that this chart reflects? Because it's not everything in the budget. It's just things that we made a decision related to?
These were back in October when we did the recommend to fund, recommend not to fund. This is the list of items that the board landed on approving.
So they're like decision points that we had?
Yes.
And then there's other things that were just kept at maintenance level that we wouldn't see in here because they're still funded. We just, they're not in this chart.
Yeah, if you remember, Commissioners, folks submitted requests. The budget team, and we went through the process, made recommendations with the view of really not increasing the general fund contribution. And so those requests were rolled up, and that's effectively what Summer's going to go through with you. So, do you want to add?
No, sir.
Yep, just making sure I knew that I'm looking...
Yeah, I think context is really important.
I have a question. I'm in a pickle. I'm supposed to be at a SWAC meeting, which is one that I can't make very often because we do have quite a few things going on. So my question is, are we going to be making, and they're looking for a quorum?
Okay.
Because that's usually what's driving me. Are we going to be making some decisions here that I should be participating in?
This, go ahead.
Two decisions that you need to make today. The first is, are there any changes based on the public hearing that you'd like to make to the budget or any other information that came up?
Okay, I'm going to say no to that from my own perspective.
I'm assuming you didn't hear anything in the public hearing that would make you change?
Well, we're stuck. We're stuck, right?
So there you are. And then the second thing is, they're going to present some errata items that we need decisions on and the provisos in the general fund or the operating budget.
Are we making too much money and you need to give it to me or what? So you're break even or...
No, but I don't think there's anything... If we go right to the errata?
Yeah, and just for those Commissioners who are, this is probably a new process still. Errata speaks to, it's an interesting word.
It is.
It speaks to cleanup of budget items and reconciliation that as they shake the budget out, there's things that may not have aligned on numbers or things that may have been off, but they're bringing to term with you. That happens every time we're doing the budget.
Every time. Errors, omissions, and additions.
Those are standardized. Everything I've dealt with is standardized. I did bring my magnifying glass for the smaller font that I was stuck with, but...
I need one of those.
Do you leave that behind?
I was like, "Go ahead and leave it behind."
We should get you ones on land years, though.
There you go.
And then the other item, just to provide some context,
I'll put it back in your desk.
is the proviso list is any budget items that had a provision. I'll give an example. The county's going to fund 25% of this if the agency funds 75% of that. They're rounding up on provisions, items that they're flagging for your attention because some of the funding that you've approved has a provision to initiate that funding. If the provision's not met, then you have to round that.
It's any restrictions placed upon the appropriations.
Okay, maybe I can zoom this for an initial meeting and come back in just a few minutes, maybe.
And we're available, sir, to answer any questions?
If my seatmates can't figure it out, they get in a situation where they need a tiebreaker.
Gary, be in your office.
Yeah, I'm going to try to do it from there rather than...
Excuse me, Gary. Commissioner Edwards, can she just, she thinks maybe her presentation got folded into your packet.
Yeah, I wrote questions on it. I don't know, Ty, if I accidentally gave it to you when we were talking before the meeting. But it was the slides from today, and I had my questions written on it, and I had it here, and now it's gone.
I don't have it.
Okay.
Okay, well, tell me...
I'm going to be on page six, my questions, not the one with the big logo.
Okay, this one?
Yeah.
Think I grabbed it from you?
Maybe, I don't know.
Well, anything is possible. Yes, it is.
There it is. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I am sorry about that.
Thank you. I was playing a ping for a second.
I might be back in a few moments.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, and before we get, and this is good perspectives from you because we want to make sure we're providing the context, so you understand what we're trying to accomplish today. Any other questions without context that would be, you would need in order to move forward?
I mean, what I remember from previous years is like, this would be like, there might be five or six just random straggly questions, like, oh, the Commissioners, we're going to do this, but only if this funding source could be shifted. And you come back and say, "Well, that can't happen, so, okay, we're sticking with," you know, it's tying the bow on some outstanding decisions. And my understanding is we really don't have a list. You know, this process was so tight that we basically don't have that kind of list of like policy, remaining policy questions to be resolved. So we're just kind of, I'm just guessing, but you tell me if I'm wrong, but we're just kind of, just kind of going through the overview of where we're at. There isn't really that list of questions to be decided still.
You know, really hard year, there've been times when these last couple of days were full. But usually, by the time we get here, it's just some...
Or a good year because we had money, we had choices.
Yes, exactly.
Exactly.
It's the two extremes.
It's a hard year.
Yeah, when you have a lot of money, there's things that you're prioritizing. When you don't, or you're making cuts, and there's things you're prioritizing. We decided to do the middle ground, steady as she goes, not increase, but meet our obligations, land the 25, and then work in '25 on the '26-'27.
So I didn't, for that reason, I looked at these spreadsheets, but I didn't, I really didn't know what I needed to think about for the regard of them because it seemed like it was a summary of what we already decided, and I wasn't aware of any...
That's correct.
...leading questions.
Yeah, if there were major policy items, we would have flagged those from the...
We'd have a slide about those.
Yep, and start working through decision points. But this is important for the budget team to round up on things and see if you have any questions. So with that, I'll stop talking.
Thank you. So again, on Slide 2, it is the beginning of the general fund approved items by the commissioners back in October. Can you go to the next slide, please? Slide 3 is also a continuation of the department and the fund and the items that were approved for the '24 and '25 budget, I'm sorry, '25. If you go to the next slide, this is the beginning of all other funds approved by the commissioners. And I don't know if you have any questions. This is a roll-up of all of the previously viewed and approved items back from October. If we go to the next slide, we are moving out of the operating side of budget into capital. Thank you. And...
Question.
Yeah.
Could we move the zoom bar to the top, please, just so I can make sure I'm on the right page?
Oh, yeah. We're covering the page numbers.
Sorry. Awesome. Thank you.
I do want to see the little square because, for sure, Fornier has his hand up.
Yep.
Just move it wherever it's convenient.
Awesome. Thank you.
So capital is beginning on Slide 6. And if you go on to Slide 7, the rest of the capital approved items back from October. And then if we move forward to Slide 8, that is the errata 2 list. And these are, as Leonard mentioned, the cleanup items, whether they're just details or maybe something was keyed in incorrectly. There were a couple of additions to this list, such as the bond. We didn't add that to the first presentation in October because the bond sale had not happened yet. This list is also labeled errata 2 because it does not encompass the errata 1 items that were presented in October. These are the new items. Yeah, because those have already been approved. And if there are any questions, we're happy to answer the questions at this point. And that is just the high-level roundup of all of the previously discussed, reviewed, and approved items.
So we should walk through the errata list and ensure the board is comfortable with these items?
Okay.
Clarifying question. When it's just dashes versus having numbers in there, does that convey something?
It's a zero, yes.
Well, it's also some of it, so for the LMD one that I know that you're looking at right now, that is cleanup based on the transfer from Public Works to Public Health. When they did the reduction of the indirect cost for the LMD, that got applied to Public Works instead of where the funding is in Public Health. So the adjustment is moving it out of Public Health, which shows a negative budget, to Public Works where it's going to be zero. So both will end at zero. So that's a, it's a really technical cleanup item that doesn't impact the fund balance. It's just a difference between the department, which is why we had to bring it forward because it's a change in departments.
We describe this as, this is kind of the backup house, like you said, Commissioner Mensah, the cleanup. It is very important that you are aware of what's going on, but it's the team kind of working through, tidying everything up for the final adoption on the 17th.
Okay, so if we're going to go through this list, the first line item, 2.1, is operating request for new debt proceeds. That's in the commissioner's office, and it is reflecting $1 million in revenue in '24 with the matching expenditure, and then '20-'25, $33 million. And the reason for this addition, as well as the second line, was that the bond process was completed after the midterm close. If we go down to line 2.3, it is capital request for the courthouse project in Central Services in the commissioner's office to reappropriate or have a technical correction. There's no impact to your line item budgets and changing the appropriation from Department of Central Services to the commissioners. That shows $23,756,520 in '20-'24, a reduction in expenses and an addition in '20-'25 of $20 million. 2.4 is an operating change request for large system replacement reserves in Central Services. And this is for the Sheriff's Office Axon body and vehicle camera request. And it's just shifting the funding from '20-'24 into '20-'25. And you can see that's $95,970. Thank you, Jennifer. 2.5 is operating change request, also large system replacement, Central Services for the Axon body and vehicle cameras. Same thing, it's moving the funding up from '27 to '25, and that is from ERNR reserves. It's $1,040,000.
And there's money in the fund to pay for it already, not creating additional...
It's been collected in the reserves over time. 2.6 is an operating change request to clean up budget lines for the LMD funds from the transfer from Public Works into Public Health. 2.7 is an IT, an operating change request for the Thurston County body worn cameras. Again, the Axon. That particular change request was canceled. And I believe that's rolled up to lines 2.4 and 5. Sorry, my print is very small. 2.8 is general fund IT operating change request, and it's to correct the position allocations by shifting expenses from general fund to IT. $25,594 in '20-'24 expenses shifted into '20-'25 for a total there of $102,378. And then 2.9 is an operating change request in Public Works, and there are multiple line items that needed to be cleaned up related to the new water and sewer funds indirect rates. So nothing major here. I think nothing that is...
Mostly technical.
I have a question for you, Summer. How does line 2.7 relate to lines 2.4 and 2.5? Since they're all about the Axon body cameras, can you explain the relationship between those line items?
I believe, and I'll rely on Jennifer and Dolly to back me up on this answer, but I believe it's because we are shifting the initial purchase from IT to ERNR reserves and then the remaining years of the five to 10 years of system support, if you will, for how they extract the video from the cameras, that'll come from the IT budget. So the initial purchase is coming from the ERNR.
And the IT budget piece won't happen until 2026, so you don't see that.
Okay, so that's why it's canceled.
Right, and they started the Axon process six months ago, and this is what IT was going to do, and then it's changed since then, and we've come up with a new contract and a new way to do it. So that's what the 2.4 and 2.5 are.
Okay.
Yeah, the concept is, the ERNR is like a set aside department, like a count. Departments put away for...
Right, yeah.
When they need the money to make changes. And rather than continue the software they were on, which is outdated, they're going to make the change and then draw upon that account.
Okay, so if that's not happening until 2026?
So that, it'll happen, but then when it's going to hit the IT budget is the delay.
In '26.
They're going to use that account, and then it'll switch over and hit the IT budget, but then they're going to be charged internal rate charges for that.
Okay.
We'll buy the stuff out of ERNR where we've been saving for it, and then the software that kind of comes with the stuff, the charges and collections for that software in IT begin the following year.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So then how are we, is it like they'll be back paying for the 2025 use of the video extractions? Or how does that work if we're not paying for it until 2026, but we're using that software?
The first year's purchase price is for, as Robin said, the things, right? The tangible equipment and then the support that goes with it. All the subsequent years are essentially IT support.
Okay.
It's like the...
The first year, the software comes with the stuff.
Okay.
So it's got, it's paid from two different funds.
Like, you buy, I don't know what cable company you have here. They're going to say, "Here's your modem, and the cost of the modem includes the first year of service, but you have to pay for the modem. After that, the modem cost falls off, and you're just paying for the service."
Okay.
So we're using that one account that was built to pay for the hardware. But the hardware has the first year software, and then ongoing, we're switching it to the IT, which they covered through the rates, and that's the appropriate way to pay for ongoing software.
Okay.
So if you think about it, you're taking the money to buy the stuff from your savings account, and then you're paying the ongoing maintenance and operation out of an M&amp;O account.
Okay.
And the reason why the, and I don't know that this came through in the presentation from staff, but the reason why that contract is valuable is because... but the reason why the, that contract is valuable is because when they get into that contract for the period of years, they also get automatic upgrades. And in the current contract, that's why they were putting money aside to have to upgrade the hardware. In this case, they're getting, they're built into the cost is upgrades of the hardware. So you pay for the hardware and then you go forward. But with the contract, when the hardware is outdated, they're going to be getting upgraded.
Okay.
And what we anticipated in the, I think, the lifetime, there could be three, almost four upgrades, which would cost us out of pocket a lot more money. Because we'd have to pay for the service with another provider.
Okay.
So the team negotiated when we drilled in, we were proud of Lonnie and IT. And also Rebecca jumped in from our purchasing department. We were proud of the contract that they negotiated because it's pretty competitive.
Thank you.
Yeah. It took us a number of side meetings to dig in and to understand the value. But once we did, it was, we understood why IT was recommending this to the sheriff.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
On the errata?
I don't see anything. No.
And do we have a thumbs up to move forward with the errata?
Yep, thumbs are up.
Yeah, and from you too. Okay. Wonderful. So as mentioned, there is a proviso list that we are working through that will be sent to you via email for review in the next day or so. I'm hoping to get it to you by the end of today. Essentially, this has come before the board in prior years tied to a resolution to, the resolution to adopt the operating budget, I believe is the resolution. There are several items in the proviso that we're going to remove. A great many of them are tied to public safety sales tax transfer funds from general fund into the public safety sales tax funds. And that isn't the direction that the sheriff wishes to go. So those will be stripped out, as well as a few other things. So if you have any questions on those, feel free after to reach out to the county manager. And we will be happy to answer them. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. I do have a ton of questions, so I'll try to like
Yeah.
So actually, going back to the errata list, the first two items are related to the bonds?
Yes.
These are the bonds for is this the bonds for the new sheriff building or is this courthouse bonds?
This is the 2024 bond, and it includes the FJC. It includes the ballot processing center and the sheriff's.
Okay, so I do have questions about those, but I actually, when I was looking at this last night, I didn't make it to this page. I was, I was working on this till like 11 o'clock. I didn't make it to the errata page, but there is, there are line items about the bonds on the other pages. So I do have questions about them, so I don't know if now would be an appropriate time to ask those questions.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
This is what this time is for.
Okay, perfect. Um, so
I think page six, if you want to go to slide six, please. Thank you.
Okay, so let's see. So I'm kind of going between page six and page eight. So on page eight, the errata list shows revenue and expenses at 33 million. On page six, it shows that like, for example, the sheriff's building is 20 million. Okay, so then Motman complex is about 10 million, and then juvenile security improvements are 1,600,000. Is the FJC improvements on page eight as well? Is that looped in with the 33 million?
That is the grand total.
So that's the total. Does that include interest? The 33 million, does that include, like, the payments with interest?
Well, the bond, so all payments are, are built, have the interest built into it.
Okay, and what was the final interest rate we got?
The expenses on lines one and two are not the payment of the bonds.
Those are different.
Those are the payments for the projects. This is a, this is an account, and really, all the revenue should be in the first year on the new debt proceeds fund. I'm not sure why there's two lines, but the, the money comes into a holding account. And it just sits there until we do the capital projects. And we pay for the capital projects out of other funds. And so at the time they're paid for, then the money that you've been holding from the debt proceeds gets transferred to the funds that are paying for the projects. Another fund is making the debt payment. Those debt payments are approved as part of your budget out of the public safety sales tax accounts. And that's where there's interest built into those debt payments.
Okay.
And they're about a million and a half a year roughly.
Okay, so a million and a half a year.
Includes the principal and the
Okay.
And the interest.
Okay. Okay, that was a little confusing to me about the bond holding fund versus the debt issuance fund.
Well, I think it's, it's probably confusing from, and it is confusing.
Yeah, that is confusing.
Because what we're talking about is they're accounting for the money coming in, money coming out, how we're going to pay, how it's shifting. That's what this is. This isn't necessarily a budget. This is just making sure that on the accounting aspect of it, it all matches up.
Yeah, okay.
And it's all, it's facilitated so that it can not only match up, but that it can be paid for.
Okay.
It has to be budgeted because you're making payments. Each transfer is considered a payment. Each bond payment is obviously a payment.
Okay.
It, it's like the accountability of the money.
Yeah.
So you have to move stuff around.
Yeah, that's so confusing. Okay. Let's see, so I was also wondering what the final terms on the limited tax obligation bonds are. I know on a previous slide, I think from maybe October, it mentioned a 5% interest rate, and I was wondering if that was the final rate that we got, or if there was any updates since October.
I believe Robin sent out, are you talking about the most recent bond we had, or the one, the bond for the sheriff's building?
Yeah, the sheriff's building, the Motman complex, and the FJC.
Okay, do you know what the interest rate?
5%.
Was it, that's what we settled on? Okay. I didn't know.
That's what the actual bond issue was at.
Yeah, that bond had, had already been issued, yeah.
Okay, awesome. I just didn't know if there was an update since the October presentation, so that's good to know.
And that's a locked-in rate.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was actually an extremely successful sale according to our bond advisors.
Okay.
Yeah, they were, the bond people were geeking out over it.
Yeah, super happy.
That reminds me of what I
We'd been using a 5% placeholder, and that's exactly what we got, so.
Okay.
Which is what we wanted, because if it went higher, then it would have thrown off our payments and we would have to calculate.
Yeah, okay. Um, so let's see the Okay, so what is the total, like, at a 5% interest rate, what would we be paying in interest over the course of the 20 years and then the 10 years for the
So we can look that up. It's all in the bond documents.
Okay, because I tried to calculate it last night.
It's tricky.
Let us, let us give you
We'll get you a pay schedule.
Yeah, there's a schedule.
I was going to say the 5%.
Yeah.
And I was all excited. I got a super low interest rate.
Yeah, that's
Our bond advisor has done all that work. And it, unlike your mortgage, it's not a fixed annual payment. When they bid on the bonds, the bidders structure it in, in the way they want to maximize their interest rates
Okay.
within the bid. So
Yeah.
It's a different payment amount every year, especially since we structured the bonds where we're paying off the remodel of Motman for the ballot processing center in 10 years. And we're paying for the sheriff's new building and remodel over 20 years.
Yeah.
So we really need to just give you the payment schedule.
Okay, and I know we authorized at one point up to 42 million for all the bonds. And does that, like, that will include all the interest for all three bonds, basically? It won't go over 42 million?
No, the, the, what you authorized was for us to issue up to 42 million in bonds, and we actually issued closer to 33.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a bit like, what we have the ability to get as far as debt and what we're going to recommend, we're always going to recommend way lower than what we have the ability to get in debt, in debt ourselves.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't have any concerns, the budget team doesn't have any concerns about us hitting our bond payments. We feel absolutely comfortable. Otherwise, we would be having a much different conversation. And in this recent bond issuance, we, we would have structured it differently. So we will, yeah, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Hope that helps.
Yeah, that helps. Thank you. And then kind of unrelated, but can you tell me again what the proviso list is?
Sure. So the proviso list is a list, ongoing list for some of these items of previously board-approved funding that has contingencies that are tied to them. So as Leonard stated, one of the provisos in here is for the sheriff's office to provide a resource officer to a school. And the provision is that the school provides 75% of the funding for that resource officer position. And then the county provides 25%.
If they failed to do that, then the expenditure authority would be gone, and we wouldn't it's like us being able to put conditions on our spending.
It's, and that's the perfect word. It's the conditions you place. So
Same question.
Yeah. Once you make an appropriation according to the law, that official, elected or appointed, has the discretion to spend that money in any legal way. And a proviso allows the board to place conditions on how part of that money is spent.
Okay.
Which kind of goes to the fundamental, and please commissioners weigh in, but fundamental understanding of your policy power in setting budgets. Folks can't spend if they don't have appropriation authority. So when you're saying, we're allowing you to spend this money, you're giving them the appropriation authority. With appointed department heads, there's operational direction input and even control you have through me, the county manager, as we work together. With elected offices, you appropriate the money they have by, I think it's state statute, and it's even been litigated, I understand, much more broad authority to then take that money and spend it as they see operationally fit. So provision allows you to have, when you're, when you're crafting something, allows you, and it's not just with our own electeds, it could be with an outside agency, allows you to target that a little bit more to say, we want this to be spent here. So for example, the resource officer, you say, here's the money, but what if there's no provision in there? They could take the money, maybe spend it on something else. But if you're saying, we're going to match, so you have to match, you're kind of committing them to the position. Because if they don't do it, then we're not going to do it.
Okay. Did we receive a list of, or the proviso list?
I'm hoping to get it to you by the end of the day, but it may be tomorrow.
She said it's coming.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I might have said this to you, Commissioner Claus, I feel like I did, but you check with Nicole at the treasurer's office? There's like a couple of half-day trainings. It's mandatory for the finance committee, which is the chair. But I'm sure anyone could sign up for them, and they go through a lot of this bond, like county finance stuff. Didn't make me any kind of expert, but at least I can kind of follow with the basis points and the different bond issuances and how they're structured and why you do, you know, shorter, you try to create, you know, you try to create a portfolio that's resilient by doing, by having different types of anyway, it's pretty useful for these types of questions. I would highly recommend it because it's, it's very efficient. It's not, it's a good use of time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll probably do that.
Jeff and his team does a fantastic job of laying this out. And Jeff is with us all along the way when we're doing a bond sale and engagement. He's helping us navigate that, and he's a pleasure to work with.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Maybe, but not right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the door's always open.
I do want to point out on lines one and two that we're actually, I'm sorry, can you go to slide eight, please, on the errata? So on lines one and two, we're going to shift the 33 million in '25 over to '24. Yeah, I want to make the board aware of that. We're going to put all of the revenue and expenses into the '24 budget so that we can
Not all the expenses, just all of the
The revenue. Sorry. Thank you. I need one of those too.
She's got a flashlight in it too.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I have one more question.
Sure.
I talked to you, Summer, about this this morning, but on, on page six, I was thinking the expenses for those bond payments should be broken down by, by year. And we figured out that that's just the total for the project and not for 2025. But on the errata list on page eight, it does have the column that's specifically for 2025 expenses. So wouldn't that be where we would want to put, like, the 1.6 million, 1.3 million, and 259,000 for the annual payments?
No, lines 2.1 and 2.2 are to receive the debt proceeds and the debt issuance funds, right? That's to put that into the budget to spend. These are the project costs. So if you look at the fund number, right, these are tied to Central Services Reserve on slide six. Because the projects will be paid from those particular funds.
Okay.
The proceeds from the bonds will come here.
Okay.
If I had a whiteboard, it could show you how it all moves.
Okay, I just didn't see anywhere
You can get it. Totally whiteboard.
Okay.
We're going to whiteboard it.
Oh, cool, okay.
The reason why I think this is important, because I understand that sometimes those aspects of members of the community that will come and say, you're doing something wrong.
Right.
And as in government, we never want to do anything wrong. You know, we are stewards of the public's trust and but when they throw that out there, it can be a bit alarming, like, oh, shoot, what's going on? So I think it would be important, because we're really talking about how the money is being set up to be spent. But, there we go. So, Robin, maybe you can do this over here, so those that are watching.
On the camera, it's
Right here. I'll just move my big head. Right there?
Oh, there you go. I think it has to be right here. Let me check with him. He's got it.
No, scooch over to the left a little bit, Robin.
Come towards Summer, Robin. Then you have to talk. Talk more, Robin.
You got to talk, just get the camera.
The camera's got to track you.
No, I can't.
Oh, there we go. I see.
Better?
A little more this way. And you got to talk. Okay, that's good.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, welcome.
I can see it right there.
Thank you.
I think he's got to adjust the camera up a little bit, or he's got it right in the middle.
Okay. I'm going to start, and y'all can follow along. So we issue bonds, right? And they're in the mount for the capital projects. It includes about a million dollars in issuance costs. But for the capital projects, we get $32 million. And they're going to wire transfer it into us tomorrow. So because we're certainly going to receive 32 million, that goes into a bond proceeds account.
Is that the bond holding fund?
It, yep, it's a holding fund.
To receive the money.
Okay.
So you're just going to hold the money there until it's spent. So the 32 million is received all at once in 2024. And it's going to sit there until you do the capital projects. You're going to do a sheriff's building. You're going to do the Motman remodel for the ballot processing. The person who holds the pen doesn't have to spell right, right?
I'm with you. You're here.
And you're going to do the FJC. So, in 2025. We're going to do the entire sheriff's building, it's going to be done next year. And that's going to be paid out of the building reserve fund. It's a capital project fund. So we're going to pay out 30, whoops.
20.
20, thank you, 20 to purchase and remodel. For Montman, it's going to be 10, and for the F J C, it's going to be 2. And all three of these projects are going to be done next year, which is unusual for a capital project. But we're on it, we're doing it. So they're going to spend the money, and then this 32 million is going to move out of the. Proceeds fund into the building reserve fund to pay for each of these. And it'll be moved as it's spent. So on the day we buy the building, we'll spend, what is it, 14 million? And we'll move 14 million, so that this account is not in the red.
I think it's 14 and change, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, roughly. So, once you move it out, this fund is down to zero, and you'll close the fund. Then, you own these buildings, and the projects are done, and you move to M and O, like any other building we own. Over here, then, starting also in 2025, is the bond payment account. And we are required by state law and IRS tax code to have the treasurer pay out of a specific payment fund. So they'll start making the payments. And the payments are roughly 3 million, roughly 3 million a year.
Okay.
Starting in '27, when it's.
Okay. Okay, awesome.
Well, you'll, you'll see how they're all broken down in the schedule, because the first year, we only pay interest, and. I mean, there's a lot of technicality, but on average.
I can pause right there, that's what Robin was referring to, that when you go to issue a bond. The person that you're working, or, or the group that takes it up, will come up with a bond schedule payment. They may want it differently paid out, but that's something you negotiate through with them.
Okay, is the bond payments fund the same thing as the debt issuance fund?
No, uh, no.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what the debt issuance.
That's that, there's the.
You're calling that the bond payment fund?
I believe that in the two resolutions that we had the templates approved, there was the bond proceeds or the bond holding, and then debt issuance. Bond debt issuance.
Okay, so either way, we're talking about the same thing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Some of the language, I think internally is, you know, it's a little more simplified to make the understanding a little easier.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right, so you're making these payments every year, right? And to cover the payments, you're putting in money from. Public Safety Sales Tax Law. Public Safety Sales Tax Justice. And, right now, general fund. This is, this is for the sheriff's building, this is for the ballot processing center, and this is for the F J C. So, putting in. 1.5. 1.5, and some small amount to cover the annual cost of that.
I wrote down 259,000 on that one.
That sounds about right.
Okay.
So this number will be, we'll just round it to show.
And as Robin's drawing up there, just, this is for the sake of an exercise, she doesn't have their spreadsheets dialed in, so.
Right, yeah, these are not exact numbers, don't get caught up on the dollar amount, but this shows you how the money flows.
That's what I found last night, was like, yeah, there's like a little bit of change here and there, but ultimately, it pretty much adds up to the same, to the 32 million.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, that helps, and that was another question which you kind of just answered, but I didn't see on the sheet, on page six. I, one of the things I wrote down was, why are the Public Safety Sales Tax Justice Law and General Fund not listed on page six? It's in the Central Services Reserve.
Page six is your capital project, that's this piece.
Okay.
This is an operating expense, it is buried.
In the packet somewhere?
Yeah.
And.
Well, and not, it's, it's in your base, which is not reflected in this packet.
Okay.
The base is not what we're doing today.
Okay.
That, this is really the, the.
Okay, that helps a lot, thank you.
Yay.
It's a part of the job I like.
Sorry about that, I hope that was okay to.
That was interesting, yeah, I didn't realize there were those, that breakout, all the separation.
Right.
That was useful, yes.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay, um, what's next? Summer?
I'm sorry.
No, take your time, I'm just.
Well, that's, if there are no other questions, that's the end of this presentation, um.
You'll, we'll look at our proviso list, and then we'll have the final action on December 17.
Yes, sir.
Right, and you'll have, um, I believe that you've already received the list of all of the resolutions you'll be asked to pass. On that date, if you have any questions at all about any of them. Get ahold of Summer, Leonard, or anyone on the team.
Okay, so. We're, we're done, unless there's other questions, any questions from the board?
Next step is December 17 meeting, and unless there's any questions from the board, we're ready to move on, Chair.
Okay, any commissioner items, any to address, Commissioner Claus?
I had one more question, I talked to you before the meeting a little bit about the care coordinator stuff, and I was wondering, like, is now a good time to ask that question?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, it was regarding the treatment sales tax, we talked a little bit about this before, but I just wanted to ask on the record. We didn't have a recommendation to approve the care coordinator request from district court through the treatment sales tax. And I was just wondering if someone could speak to that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. We are supportive of working with district court on accomplishing that. I think for us, it's about the timing as it relates to the, the compensation plan. And rolling that into the right timeframe where we can do appropriate studies so that it's not out of sequence. And also, if we can roll that into when contracts are ready to be negotiated. I, I want to just commend Frankie for his interaction with our office, he's a great team player. So, it's more, it's not about the funding aspect, it's more about working with H R. And what's the right time? And making sure that there's the market background to support those increases. I think we have some work to do, and I would say to you that we'd be happy to work on that at early '25. And come back to the commissioners with some, some thoughts and recommendations on how to accomplish that.
Okay, thank you, I'll look forward to those conversations, that's something I think is really important, so.
Yeah, and, and I, based on our conversation, I want to make sure that if there's major operational impacts to district court that we, I can talk to Frankie about. What do we need to mitigate that before we come up with a solution?
Okay, thank you.
Either commissioner, items commissioners want to address this morning? We have a work session, I see at 3:00? 3 o'clock today. So at that time, we'll be addressing agriculture advisory, or no, agricultural zoning.
And looking ahead.
And legislative session.
25 legislative.
Devin will be here.
He'll be here, kind of talk it through, it'll be a great time for the board to engage.
Okay, very good, that worked.